Good afternoon, not working? There we go. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the...I always forget what month it is. March 4th, meeting of the Lincoln City Council. I'd like you to all join me as we stand and do a pledge allegiance to the flag. That'll be followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Teresa, I want to read my statement first, then we'll go to the other things.
Yes, correct.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the open meetings access posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business before the city council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an agenda item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicants and those in favor should speak first, then those in opposition. The speaker will be then allowed a short rebuttal. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue, not on the agenda for this date nor planned for a future agenda. And now we'll go back to our regular agenda, and I think we have a couple of presentations before we start. Mr. Mayor, would you help us, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to help you.
Thank you.
And I'm especially appreciative today allowing us to take even a little more time to celebrate.
Yes.
But it is indeed, as you know, a celebration of something that is a relatively rare occurrence and a very nice, positive occurrence. So, the historic moment that we're talking about involves the employees of the Lincoln Transportation and Utilities Department. They have earned national accreditation. How about that? Whole number of them here today. Thank you all, and a whole number of them out there on the street in very cold weather. As you know, the department delivers some of the most critical services for the livelihood and the health and the well-being of our residents. That's including working with drinking water and transportation and solid waste and wastewater and stormwater management, and we could not be more proud of the team for this recognition that they're receiving today. This accreditation, and by the way, I should mention just for your information, we now have our fire department, our police department, 911, and more recently, our health department, and now our transportation and utilities department, all nationally accredited. That would make about 75 percent of our employees operating in nationally accredited departments, and they've paid accredited. None have moved in the opposite direction. This particular accreditation is the accumulation, is the culmination of years of hard work and commitment to service. It demonstrates that LTU employees challenge themselves every day to bring more value to the residents they serve. We're pleased to have the opportunity to share this moment with the council. The council, of course, most directly made it possible because of the resources you've given the department to work with, and we have a special guest with us today from the American Public Works Association to make it all official. With me is Chuck Williams today from down Kansas way is where he hangs out most of the time. He's led public works agencies and projects in Lenexa, Kansas, and Gladstone, Missouri, and several other places for more than 30 years. He's...his units have been a member of APWA since 1982, and he now represents the National Association charged with maintaining professionalism and national best practices throughout the industry. So, I'd like to ask Director Mickey Esposito to join us at the podium to accept the accreditation on behalf of the department, and Chuck, I think you want to say a few words in the process if you do not.
Please.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Chairman and governing body members, this is a great pleasure. I did spend several years in public works and attended a lot of governing body meetings, and when I retired, I actually indicated to my wife that if I offered to go to another governing body meeting, she was welcome to stop me, but I had to preface it except for accreditation visits. This is such an honor on my behalf to be here to recognize LTU. They have accomplished a great deal in a very short period of time. When you consider that most agencies for accreditation take anywhere from 24 to 30 such months to complete, LTU completed it 18 months. Now, we're here to recognize the department for all their accomplishments, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that in order to achieve accreditation, it requires the commitment of the governing body, the administration, as well as the department. It takes everyone to be on board because it's a monumental task to accomplish. There are over 600 best management practices that each agency has to review and determine whether or not they are applicable to their department, and if they are, they have to write a policy and procedure for each and every one of them. LTU was responsible for over 500 of those practices. That is an extremely high number. A lot of agencies are in the 300-plus. LTU is responsible for over 500. And out of that, they also achieved two model practices. One for their strategic plan, which I really thought was outstanding because a strategic plan sets the direction for the department, and to be recognized as a model practice is something that they should be extremely proud of. And also for your facilities management for securities. Those two practices are going to be shared across the country as examples of excellence. Prior to joining the Board of Directors of APWA, I was an evaluator, and to be a model practice, we hold a department to very, very high standards, and I can be honest, I never gave a model practice. LTU received two, so they should be extremely proud of that effort. So, a couple of other things. LTU is the first agency in Nebraska to become accredited. They are the 100 and... I hope they'll send a challenge out to all other agencies across the state to take on the same task, but they are also being the 150th agency to be accredited. So, that's another kind of milestone for LTU and APWA. So, you know, it's with a great deal of pleasure that I'm here to recognize Director Esposito and her staff for all of their efforts and to present you with your accreditation plaque. And who would you like that to be given to?
I think we're supposed to hold it up.
Yeah, there's a photographer to the north.
Congratulations.
Everybody kind of rotate so you're facing...John, did you get it? Did you need...yeah, there we are.
All right, team, this is our Wimbledon.
Yes.
Can we get everyone some band so we can acknowledge them? Are you going to do that? Okay, good. You tell me when I want to.
I should also mention that this program is one of continuous improvement. You need to take a deep breath and appreciate your accomplishment, but get ready because in four more years, you have to do it again.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck, very much. Mickey, before you wade in here, let me just say thank you to Chuck and to the association and make a couple of additional comments. Chuck talked about what accreditation means to the industry, and it also means a lot of things to the citizens of Lincoln. It means that when you put your trust in a team from this department, you can be assured that they will demonstrate a commitment to excellent service, that they will be dedicated to following best practices, policies, and protocols based on the latest body of knowledge in the industry, that they will be relentless in working towards finding better, faster, more efficient, and economic ways to deliver transportation and utility services, and maybe, most important, they are public servants to the core, working for the good of the community. And I want to again take this opportunity to thank them all, those that are with us today and those that are in the trenches today for their commitment to excellence and innovation and continual improvement. Mickey, your great leadership, thank you so much for that, and we will hope and know that the improvement in the quality of life that you have brought about will attract new residents and give our children opportunities for the future. So, with that, I'm sure you have more than a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chuck, for this incredible honor, and thank you for city council for letting us appear before you today. You know, APWA is the standard for professionalism, and it recognizes agencies for compliance with national best practices, and only a few agencies are selected each year, so we are honored to be the first in Nebraska. This accreditation confirms that we are a high-quality organization that citizens can depend on to deliver transportation and utility solutions to meet their evolving needs, and we are thrilled to bring this national recognition home to Lincoln. But the question real quick, and I hope this PowerPoint jumps up real quick, I'm going to just run through the journey to get here because I really want you to appreciate what this team has been through. We began this process in 2012, and this might look easy because we're celebrating, but actually, it was quite a journey. And in 2012, as a brand-new director, we worked closely with the leadership team to set forth a course toward being the best agency we could possibly be. Beginning with culture, you know, Scott Frost reminded us last week, culture eats scheme for breakfast, and so we had to really improve the way we approached our public, and we strive to add value to the community in a way that makes the community feel valued, and that's our mantra. Leadership, we had to bring in and recruit strong leaders, but we also had to train and retain talented individuals and empower them with tools and resources to do their job really, really well. Self-assessment, just the honesty and the openness in saying to ourselves, what are we doing well and what do we need to improve upon? That continual improvement in self-assessment actually led us to developing the 2020 Vision Strategic Plan, and each of these things just built on each other. This reflects who we are, what we value, what we do, how we're doing it, and where we're going in the future. And as you heard, this is a model practice in the nation. And then that led us to implementation. Today, the 2020 Vision is 87 percent complete, and we're on track to completing it in 2020. Once you have that strong foundation, we can start looking toward innovation as we embark on the future, and what can we bring to Lincoln and future-proof Lincoln. Finally, accreditation. That leads us to today. Number one in the state of Nebraska, 150th in the nation, and 100 percent of the credit goes to our incredible employees for their deep commitment to the process, our department, and our community, and I would love to have them stand today.
I would like that, too.
And be recognized. Can you all just stand up? All of the chapter representatives, our LTU team members. These are the true heroes. In addition to doing their regular duties, they endeavor to create this legacy for our department. I'm so emotional. I'm so sorry. A well-oiled machine of dedicated, intelligent, capable, confident, customer-focused, nimble, and loyal public servants who believe in the dignity and quality of life for our fellow citizens. These remarkable people deserve your respect and high praise for their efforts and accomplishments. I just couldn't be more proud. Thank you. With that, I want to thank Mayor Beitler, the city council, for all your support over the years, and APWA for this awesome recognition. It's time to celebrate. I think we have sheet cake.
Wait, what?
Cheese cake. Mr. Chairman, two people who are special today among the special group of people being honored altogether are the winners of the Mayor's Award of Excellence for January, so I'm ending where I usually start here, and if I could quickly do that, I want to introduce you to a team that's comprised of administrative aide Christina Cole and utilities securities manager David Thurber, if the two of you would come up here. Director Mickey Esposito nominated the team in the category of productivity for their work in achieving accreditation for LTU from the APWA. I'm going to cut out some of this because the process of accreditation is understood by you, I know, and in this particular case, of course, it's always dedicated to improving practices and performances and efficiency and productivity. It was mentioned that they have a large number of management practices, way more than most public works organizations, and so for our modern times, databases are more complete in this department than is normally the case. In the summer of 2017, LTU began the process of accreditation utilizing in-house staff with a completion goal of 2019. Thurber led the department through the accreditation process, and Cole provided critical administrative support. Mickey said both were vital to the completion of the effort. We could not accomplish accreditation without the focused energy to organize 40 chapter representatives pulling us through the process in 18 months instead of three years that it normally takes other agencies. The APWA evaluators were very complimentary of the competency and quality of our work here, so it's my pleasure to present Christine Cole and David Thurber with the award for excellence for January. Please help me congratulate them.
Introduce your family first.
I'm deeply humbled to receive this award because what you don't see behind me perhaps is that the total team, and that's 70 members of our department, took part in the accreditation process, so I'm deeply humbled to be the recipient of this award. But it takes a team to accomplish accreditation, it takes a team at home. So, joining me today is my family team.
Good call.
My wife Linda, my daughter Annie, her husband Max, and two wonderful granddaughters, Molly and Lauren. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for this honor. I wasn't sure why I got this, actually, because there's so many other people that brought this all together, so I'm very humbled by this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm just going to quickly reiterate what Mayor said. We couldn't have done it without these two individuals and all these heroes behind us. So, what an incredible team, and now time for sheet cake.
Thank you for the courtesy for extra time today.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. So, we'll take a small moment while people file out. Save me cake. Participation award?
Really nice ball marker on the...
I can see you doing that. So, I think everyone's filing out there, being very orderly. So, how about we go ahead and proceed with our agenda?
Sure.
While they do this. Would you call our first item of business as everyone quietly moves out of the room?
Yes. We ask those of the general public coming forward to testify to please clearly state your name, spell your name, give your address, and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Testifiers may use either microphone, and there is a sign-in sheet by each microphone. We ask those individuals from city staff who are testifying to please state your name, title, and the department you work for. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three. Is David Quaid here?
Mr. Quaid, yes.
Would you please come forward?
Point of order here. I think that computer over there is that Mickey used is overriding our screen.
And there we go. Thank you, Councilman Christensen. I think our staff in the back.
There we go.
Hi. David Quaid, Q-U-A-D-E, and I am here to...I have been nominated to participate in the Capitol Environment Commission, or at least I have requested my opportunity to serve in that capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Quaid, for coming forward. I kind of got out of sync with everybody moving around. I usually ask you to say what you just said. Thank you. So, I appreciate your willingness to serve on the council, on the commission. Can you tell us how you found out about it and what's your history? What's your education, your training comes?
I'm an architect. I work with Sinclair Hilli Architects. I'm one of the five partners in the firm. I have a lifetime Lincoln resident and have been with Sinclair Hilli for about 23 years. I love the city, love the state capital, and I heard about this from one of my partners and one of the past donors of the company, John Sinclair, has served in the past, and said this would be a great opportunity to serve the community.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Do any members of the council have questions for this appointee? Thank you again for coming forward. We appreciate your time. Thank you. Here's, I think, the rest are reappointments?
Yes. So, we can vote on these items if no one else wishes to come forward. Item 1A and B were introduced by Raybold.
The move.
A motion by Raybold, second by Eskridge. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Items 1C and 2A were introduced by Christensen.
So, moved.
Motion by Christensen, second by Eskridge. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next, then, are public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is approving the labor contract between the city and the Public Association of Government Employees for a term effective August 23rd, 2018 through August 31st, 2020.
Good afternoon, council. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. We've concluded negotiations with the union page. We present that to you for your vote and ratification. There were a number of operational and language changes that we made throughout the contract, nothing of major consequence on economic issues. The two-year contract with a 2.5 percent increase for 2018 and 2019 and a 2.5 percent increase for 2019 and 2020. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions from the council for Mr. McDaniel? Mr. McDaniel, thank you very much for coming forward. Can we move to 5B now, Teresa?
Yes.
I'm sorry, thank you, Roy. Is anyone in the chamber that would like to speak on this agenda item, item 5A? Thank you, and thank you for the reminder. I appreciate that.
Okay, next is item 5B, approving an interlocal agreement between the city on behalf of the Lincoln Police Department and Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services to cooperate in the reporting of violent deaths to the Nebraska Violent Death Reporting System for a period of January 7, 2019 through October 31st, 2021, for some not to exceed $32,172.
Is there someone here to address this? Okay. Guess we'll move on to item 5C. Wait, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm going to get that wrong all day long. Is anyone in the chamber that would like to speak on this agenda item during our public hearing portion? I need a mulligan.
My name's Jessica Monroe, J-E-S-S-I-C-A-M-O-N-R-O-E.
Jessica, you can fill that out after you testify, so just...
Okay. I would like to have the video reviewed of the claim against Startran in the accident before a decision is made on insurance claims.
Questions for the testifier? Thank you. You go, I'm sorry, councilwoman.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So...
Jessica, I think she does have a question for you, and I failed to...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thanks for being here. So, you indicated that you wanted it to be reviewed, and could you just tell us a little bit about it and why?
Yes, so, I forget the actual date, but it was the first really icy Tuesday morning. I was coming around 14th and P., and I was clipped by a Startran bus. The city is saying that I crossed over the center line with an improper turn, and after reviewing the video myself, I don't see any part... reviewing the video myself, I don't see any part where I crossed over the line. So I'm just asking it to be reviewed again.
Thank you.
Other questions from the council? Thank you.
Wait, I do have a question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, does you have a car insurance, correct?
Correct.
And if you lose...if this decision comes against you, will they fulfill the claim or is this below your deductible?
They'll fulfill the claim.
Okay.
Yes, but I just...I don't see that I'm in the wrong in this situation. Asking for it to be reviewed.
Other questions? Thank you very much. We'll hear from Mr. Connolly, then we'll go on through our agenda, and then we'll come back and vote on this a little bit later in the agenda.
Chris Connolly, acting city attorney. This occurred, I forget the exact date, I believe it was, on January 22nd. And Startran bus and her vehicle were both turning left from North 14th Street onto Q Street, and her car did hit the bus and had...was going out of her lane essentially. And the report is that she then pulled over without contacting the Startran driver, went into the UPS store, came back out a few minutes later, and then just drove off. But she was made aware of the...she put in the claim, was made aware of the denial, and I believe she was given the opportunity about 2:30 this afternoon to look at the videotape. I've not looked at the videotape myself. But anyway, those are the circumstances. We just have a fundamental disagreement on what happened here, but we don't believe that it's a result of any negligence on the part of the Startran driver, and so we're still going to recommend that the claim be denied.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. Questions for Mr. Connolly? Councilman Eskridge?
Could that...
I mean, Councilman Christensen.
Okay. I meant Christensen. Not a bad thing. All right. So would that video be available for council members to review?
I believe it should be, yes. I don't have it here, but yes, we can make that...
So if we were to delay this decision on this until we had a chance to review that, we could get a video on CD or something?
Yes, we can make arrangements.
Okay.
Other questions? And we also have a motion to move on this coming back.
Before you move back and give her an opportunity, there's another claim on a Rob Smith that's up for today.
Right.
And we are recommending denial on this. However, it's unclear what the communications were that he had with our office about whether or not he was going to be able to make it today. I have no objection to continuing this one to the next hearing date to give him an opportunity to come in.
Thank you. I think, Mr. Connolly, you were referring to a rebuttal opportunity for Ms. Monroe?
That's fine with me.
Ms. Monroe, would you like to...do you have anything else you'd like to add to your testimony?
I just saw the video about 45 minutes ago.
I'm sorry, we do need you to come forward, please. Our cameras and microphones are good, but they're not that good.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Just...I just saw the video about 45 minutes ago, so that's all that I'm asking is for everybody to review it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to testify on this agenda item, pending claims against the city? Seeing no one else coming forward, can we move to our next agenda item?
Yes. Next would be item 5D, directing submittal to the qualified electors of the city a proposed general obligation bond issue for stormwater drainage and flood management system improvements not to exceed 9.9 million on the May 7, 2019 general election ballot.
So today, having before your resolution to submit the ballot question...
Who are you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I have to remind myself. Brandon Kaufman, I'm the finance director for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
So you have a resolution to put a ballot question before the voters to issue up to $9.9 million of general obligation bonds. So by general obligation bonds, that means that's backed by the full faith and credit of the city, which means that we guarantee its repayment with property taxes if needed. The city continues to carry a AAA credit rating. That means that we get the best interest rates that we can available on the market because we carry the highest rating possible, even one higher than the United States government, which is great. Estimated annual payments of 9.9 million spread over 20 years at a 3.5% interest rate is about $697,000 annually. In estimating potential impact of what this could have to a tax rate, you know, this is based off of estimated valuations for 2019, 2020, which when this is...when it would go into effect, it would require an increase of .0033 cents. Estimated impact annually to a homeowner of a value of $183,000 would be about $6 annually. So that's kind of the snapshot, and Donna's here to talk about projects.
Yes. Good afternoon, council members. My name is Donna Garden. I'm the assistant director of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. And I have a little presentation today I want to show you talking about the projects that are included in this bond issuance. We...for over 40 years, the city has approved stormwater bond dollars to fund capital improvements in our storm and drainage systems. That bond...those bond dollars are used exclusively for flood reduction projects, urban storm drainage projects, implementation of watershed projects, stream rehabilitation projects on parks' properties, street drainage projects, and watershed master planning. Let me see if I can get this started here for us.
Hope I worked around it. Never mind.
Okay. We're there? There we are. All right. And I wanted to start out primarily to talk about that our entire capital improvement program in the stormwater program is paid for by bond dollars. We've done it, as I said, for 40 years, and we don't use any other city funds for that project. Now, we do use that money, though, to leverage other funds. In particular, you're going to hear today about the other money we're getting from the federal government, and we've also received grants from state government organizations as well. Those bond dollars also provide our share when we're partnering with our NRD, our local NRD, which does most of jointly together with us on these capital improvement projects. Bond dollars help us also coordinate timing with our streets projects, parks projects, and we can work with homeowners associations throughout the city. So here's a list of the projects that we have for this bond issuance. Dead Man's Run Flood Reduction Project is the biggest project in this list. It's...and I'll give you some details on that here in just a minute. But we also have some other projects throughout the city. We have four...we have a Forest Lake Boulevard project that's been waiting for some work for about 12 years now. We have four park channel stabilization projects that are scattered throughout the city. We have some grade control work done on Little Salt Creek that discharges into Salt Creek. And then we have three kind of general areas that I'm going to talk about in a little bit. And this is a map. It's kind of hard to see, but you can see where the different projects are throughout the city and that they're scattered pretty much throughout. I want to talk about each one of them, but I really want to focus on this one. It's the biggest piece of this bond issuance that we'll be talking about. It's the Dead Man's Flood Reduction Project, and I want to talk primarily about the benefits associated here. 480 structures potentially coming out of the floodplain is huge. Of that, about 40 of them are commercial operations, and it eliminates the needs for those residents and commercial operations to have flood insurance. That could save those homeowners and property owners potentially anywhere between $450 and $2,400 per year. That's a huge savings. It also helps us stay in our 5% of that community rating system. The National Flood Insurance Program has a community rating service. We have a very excellent rating from all the work that we've done in the city for drainage projects and the support that the community gives to these stormwater bonds. So most of...all of Lincoln has a insurance premium that's 25% less than national. So even those that aren't in the Dead Man's Run area actually benefit from these types of projects because they too get flood insurance savings. The Army Corps of Engineers has approved this project because it is an existing significant flood risk, and it has a very good benefit to cost ratio of 2.69. That's excellent for a project like this. And our bond dollars that we get help leverage other funds. We're putting in 6.6 million into this project, and that leverages 16.6. As you can see from the...let's see if I can get that out of the way. As you can see from the breakdown here, 10 million of it is going to come from the federal government and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We have city bond funds of about 6.6 million, and these are estimated at this point. Lower Platte South NRD funding of the same amount, and we've had some other funds that actually a previous bond issuance helped pay for some early studies on. So a total of $24 million for this project. And this project stretches from about 33rd Street all the way to 48th through the Dead Man's Run area. The items in yellow there are marked are the city or local projects. It replaces three bridges, one on 33rd Street, one on 38th Street, one on 48th Street, and a detention basin. Those would be the local projects for this. The Army Corps of Engineer will do an optimized channel to help widen that channel, and the concrete flume at the crossing, I believe, by the railroad tracks there. But look at this. This is the area that actually comes out of the floodplain. It encompasses a very large area of north of that Dead Man's Run Channel itself. You can see that it covers a wide area of that part of Lincoln. The Forest Lake Boulevard Flood Reduction Project is a relatively small project compared to Dead Man's Run. It's $700,000. It reduces the risk of flooding in the area of this Forest Lake Boulevard. They've had problems with overtopping of both Forest Lake Boulevard and 67th Street, and it prevents further erosion in this drainage way. And here's a map that shows you where this is. You see 70th off to the right, 67th to the left, and this is an area here that's had lots of problems over the years, and it will actually do some bridge replacements on both 67th and Forest Lake and install grade controls along that actual streamway. We're doing four-channel, actually five...well, there's some grade control in there. Channel stabilization and grade control. And what we do with these types of projects basically, it reduces the incising of the streams that run through our parks, and it reduces the risk to other structures, improves safety in case it comes near a pathway, as we have one in Tierra Park that's very, very close to a trail, which is a safety issue. Protects the parkland from further erosion, and obviously, without carrying the sediment away, it protects water quality. And I think I had some of the districts wrong in some previous correspondence I had with you. So these are the actual districts that these are in. Tierra Williamsburg is in the southwest district. Gap Park is in southeast. Seacrest Park is also in southeast, and Olympic Heights is to the northwest. Little Salt Creek Grade Control is in our three-mile jurisdiction, and it helps protect it as it comes towards our Salt Creek. There are other bond dollars we're using, too, for some various other projects. Urban Drainage, this is kind of a general grouping that we have that we've done with almost every bond issuance that we've done. This is funding that we have to address areas where no system exists or where maybe improvements are needed for deficient drainage. And we have a number of these every year that do cause problems throughout the city that we would like to have money available to be able to help out with. We also pay for drainage and water quality portions of street projects, so that's another $800,000, as you see here. And finally, our master planning effort continues, as it does with every one of our utilities, and we've included $400,000 of it. Bond issuance cost is just the cost of issuing the bond. It's $200,000. So just a quick history, and I'm going to be done. 14 bonds have been passed since the voters since 1977. Seven of those bonds have been retired, and there are four of the remaining seven bonds have been refinanced with lower interest rates. And finally, I just wanted to encourage your passage of the resolution today so the voters can choose to decide whether this very important stormwater bond can go forward for the city of Lincoln. Thank you, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. Thanks for being here today. I didn't catch the cost. I know you've put all the projects together, so I didn't catch the cost of those last projects. And I know you had numbers over there. Could you just give me the total?
The total of the entire bond?
No, no. The channel stabilization and that...
Channel stabilization was $800,000 total.
Okay, thank you. My other question was, so I know you said this is the way we've always done this for 40 years, and I know...so this is all general obligation bonds that are funded through property tax. Can you tell me why we don't have the revenue bonds for this, why we don't take that out of the revenue from our various water bills?
The water and wastewater enterprise funds, water rates pay for water, wastewater funds pay for...wastewater rates pay for wastewater. Those enterprise funds aren't mixed, so we can't do a revenue bond from those because the stormwater doesn't have a utility of that type. We don't have rates that we charge for stormwater. Many, many municipalities do. It would be something to look at in the future possibly. So it's an opportunity for us if we choose to go down that line, but we can't do it right now because we don't charge rates for stormwater.
Thank you.
Other questions, Councilwoman?
Yeah, just to follow up with that...
Christianson? Askridge?
So how does that work in terms of a wastewater utility or stormwater utility? They...how's it...how do you figure that?
In most communities, it's charged on the basis of non-pervious surface. So if you have large areas of concrete, large areas of roof lines, you use more of the drainage system than folks who don't have that type of drainage area. So that's...you're using it on a volumetric basis, very similar to our other utilities.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the council? Ms. Garden, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Was there anyone else in the chamber that would like to speak on this agenda item? Mr. Kaufman, thank you very much also.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Mike DeKalb. There is a copy for you. I am a director for District 3 of the Lower Platte South NRD. This happens to be my district. I am also a board member and past president of the University Place Community Organization, or UPCO, as we all call it. I am testifying in support of the bond issue, specifically Dead Man's Run, which is a really big one up our piece of the city. This includes funding for the city share of Dead Man's Run Flood Reduction Project. In my district, in my neighborhood, this will remove some 480 homes and businesses, mostly homes, from the floodplain, and I think you've heard a lot of testimony on the impact that has, as this is kind of derogatory and pulls down the ability to reinvest. So I'm looking at it as both reducing the cost to those property owners and those businesses, but also giving the opportunity for redevelopment in an area of the neighborhood that really could use it. All those 480, by the way, that came out of a planning department did a GIS layer, and they took that change in the FEMA floodplain and plotted our structures over it, so that's how you got the 480. I've heard a lot of numbers over the several years this has been going on, but we're down to 480 at the moment. This is a $25 million project. The Corps of Engineers has committed $10 million. I did contact my House representative, made sure that that money's solid, not going to be diverted to something else, and they assured me that is correct. The Lower Platte South NRD has committed 7.5 million towards this project. We've been putting it aside. We'll have it all available. I voted for every one of those. And the remaining 7.5 million is anticipated to be the city share plus the grant. So we'll have all of that anticipated cost covered. So sort of in wrapping up, you'd say 70% of our cost of this thing is covered by others. The city's picking up less than 30%, so I would say that's a pretty darn good deal. And I hope we get that message across to our voters. This should substantially reduce impacts and encourage redevelopment in this part of the city, in my neighborhood, in my district, and I hope...and in UNL East Campus, as far as that goes, because Dead Man's Run goes through there. I think they're also counting benefits that aren't calculated in, but upstream of 48th, I think there will be some benefits. I personally think some of those sewage backwater problems we had a few years ago will help alleviate that because you don't have water sitting on top of those sewer lines. So that's the extent. I want to say thank you and ask you for questions. And I will mention, since I was with the city for a long, long time, hundreds of years, that we did go to the state of Nebraska asking for a stormwater utility authorization from state legislature, and that was probably 25, 30 years ago, because we wanted to do exactly what you're saying, that based on runoff, that you could get some income coming in and help pay for these projects. And they said no. And part of that issue was primarily farmers and nonprofits with large impervious areas that did not want to have to be charged for something, so... So that's the way that went. Any questions?
Does the council have questions for this testifier?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. DeKalb. Are there others that would like to speak?
Good afternoon. I'm Paul Zullig, General Manager with Lower Platte South NRD. I do have a letter that I'll submit, but I just wanted to let you know that the NRD Board really appreciates our longstanding working relationship with the city on these type of stormwater projects that are listed in the bond issue, especially the Dead Man's Run project, which is a large project we've been working on for 10 years. It's been a great partnership. We definitely are recommending that you put this on the stormwater ballot, and we think it's a great, great project, and we look forward to partnering with you on that.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Mrs. Zullig, thank you very much. Are there others in the chamber that would like to speak on this agenda item?
My name is Pam Brunkie, P-A-M-B-R-U-N-K-E. I live at 850 Irving Street in Lincoln. We own commercial buildings and vacant land at the southwest corner of 33rd and Baldwin, within the Dead Man's Run area. Even though we do not know specifically at this point how we will be impacted on this project, we're in favor of it and hope that the council puts this on the bond issue on the ballot. It's been a long process. We've been to meetings. I've sat on a citizen advisory committee at one time. This project is really needed. When we purchased the property, the property was not in the floodplain. The buildings weren't in the floodplain. There was a very small corner of the southwest corner of the property that was floodplain. Over the years, as time passed, floodplain maps were redrawn, buildings were added, floodwaters go downstream. We are now in the floodway, the entire property. Everything that we own is in the floodway. We're not allowed to add to the existing buildings or build on that vacant ground. So this has been a big deal for us. We've watched. There's been changes. I hope that this goes to the bond. I hope it passes. That's my concern with being the bond issue with everything else that is taking place right now with increases in property valuations, the sales tax issue that's going to be coming before the public. I hope it passes. I wish there was a different source for the city funding, but with the cooperation with the NRD and our Corps of Engineers, I don't think it's an opportunity that the city can pass up. But this is a big project, and if it does what it's supposed to do, it will be a major improvement. This area is also impacted by the 33rd and Cornhusker project. So there's been so many uncertainties with the Dead Man's Run and the Cornhusker and 33rd Street project, that it's been difficult and it's frustrating, very frustrating to not know what your future is. Looking at major improvements to the property, it's really hard to put money into a property when you don't know what's going to happen. So I hope that the council supports this and brings it forward, and I hope it turns out to be a good thing for us, but at this point, we don't know for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Ms. Brunkie, is that correct?
Brunkie.
Yeah, which corner did you say, southeast?
The southwest.
Southwest.
Of 33rd, right there at Dead Man's Run, right there on the corner.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber that would like to testify on this agenda? When you last like to speak? Seeing no one else coming forward, or?
All right, we can move into the voting session on these items. Item 5A is the page contract introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Raybold, second by Askridge, discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Christensen?
Yes.
Askridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. 5B is the interlocal between LPD and Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Raybold, second by Christensen, discussion?
Well, we didn't have any presentation, but we did learn from the staff report that this is simply a way that LPD gets reimbursed from Health and Human Services for their staff time necessary to comply with the interlocal, so it's pretty standard, and it's up to the amount listed of $32,000.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ness. I appreciate you. Other comments before we vote? Would you call the roll, please?
Christensen?
Yes.
Askridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then is 5C, the Report of Claims, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Raybold, second by Askridge. We also have a motion to amend and some other work, right? Councilwoman Raybold?
Well, the first motion to amend is a correction of, Julie Monroe is actually Jessica Monroe.
Are you moving that?
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Raybold, second by Christensen to amend. Discussion of the motion to amend?
Seems pretty straightforward. Let's fix it.
Yeah, let's fix this. Thank you. Teresa, when you're ready, would you please call the roll?
Christensen?
Yes.
Askridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then is 5C, the Report of Claims, introduced by Raybold.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Raybold, second by Christensen, discussion? Councilwoman Askridge?
Yes, this is how we do it. When we've got stormwater needs and projects, this is the way we've done it for years and years. Maybe there's a better way, but this is our way of doing it now. And we heard the major part of this bond issue would be for, for one, big important project, the Dead Man's Run project, and the return on that that we get from other participants is incredible. We pay about 30%, and the others pay 70%. So I support it and understand it's a challenging time for taxpayers, and leave it up to them as to whether this is important enough to approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other comments from the council? Councilwoman Christensen?
I agree with what Councilwoman Askridge has said. I also want just to add that whether you agree with this or not, it's, there are certain issues in our city that are important that the voters decide, and this is that kind of issue. And I encourage voters to take a close look at it, make their minds up, but it's, this is for the citizens to decide.
Other comments from the council? Hearing none? Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Christensen?
Yes.
Askridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Next then are our public hearing ordinance's second reading.
Item 6A, approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and 4B Kibala LLC for the sale of city-owned property generally located at 534 North 27th Street. Thank you.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. This is, depending on the council's reaction, potentially the last piece of business with respect to the 27th, the North 27th Street Tiff District. We spent a number of years making attempts to revitalize the area, and in fact, it was just this last week that you would have read this article about the renaissance of businesses on North 27th Street. I think that's a testament to the success of the projects that we've had. This is a piece of property that we bought in 2001. It cost us $120,000. It was a four-plex. It was dilapidated and rundown. We bought this at the suggestion of the 27th Street Business Association. They founded an eyesore. We bought it, we demolished it for $10,000. We have had very few inquiries as to the purchase of the land, probably more than any other reason is because there is no access point on 27th Street. If there was, perhaps it would have a more attractive commercial opportunity, but it does not. This, this is what was there. This is the lot, and here's 27th Street. This is the Masonic Temple, and this is now a grassy, regular residential-sized lot right there. Access to this lot is achieved through the alley. The buyer knows that and is willing to accept that. The buyer, Hussein Kibla, is a first-generation immigrant from Iraq. He has started and successfully managed several businesses. We've had business with him because he bought several dilapidated properties over time, used our offices to help in their revival and their improvement and their ultimate return to full and appropriate use. And in that time, we had timely payments, and everything that we asked for was honored without any problem between the two of us. In other words, we have a history with this gentleman. He also took over a restaurant with a troubled health background and now has the full approval of the Health Department and how, in fact, his operations have been done. He follows the rules, he builds, and he delivers on what he says. We put up signs for this piece of property, and we got back four offers. This is not the highest offer that we got. We did get four offers. One was for $2,000, if it could be allowed to be used as a parking lot for a church. One was for 40, and that comes from Mr. Kibla. We did have one for 51, which came from a gentleman who runs a tire store across the street, and another one was for the Lobo Mexican Grocery Store. You might want to know why we would pick this one, and there are several reasons. One, Mr. Kibla is ready to act. In fact, one of the elements of the agreement is that he will start construction within six months, or the city has the right to buy back the property at the price that he's paid. That was not the case with others. So we're going to get the development that we want, and we're going to get it, I think, in a timely fashion. It will be then improved in its valuation, and it will be on the tax rolls. The second thing is, in fact, his history with us, but it's also the fact that we've helped both of the other businesses. We, in fact, have sold land to the Lobo Recent, and they've expanded and done nice pieces of work. We bought out the tire store once, and they moved across the street, so we've assisted both of those businesses. The third reason is because we asked the 27th Business Association who they wanted us to sell the property to, and they said they liked the idea of a pita bed bakery. In fact, pita bed isn't available on a fresh basis from closer than St. Louis or Chicago. Mr. Kibla would like to not only service his own restaurant, he would also like to service others in Lincoln, and eventually, hopefully, sell on a wholesale basis. And when you sell wholesale, you bring money from other cities into Lincoln with a much higher multiplier effect than locally generated dollars. So the fact that this could be an exporter of resources is, I think, an essential virtue as well. For those reasons, we'd like to recommend the adoption of this proposal to sell for Mr. Kibla for $40,000. He's here, and we'd be happy to tell his story or answer your questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Landis. Questions for Mr. Landis? Okay. Yes.
Good afternoon. I'm kind of, all my hair is going. This is my first time.
We're very, this is, you're very welcome here. We're a nice group to talk to.
Thank you so much.
We're excited to hear from you.
Born and raised in Iraq with a man, he always worked with his hand. And I come to America, and within three days, I was working as a dishwasher at Cornhusker Hotel back in 1996. And move on, work at experience, and after Saddam Hussein was gone, I make a mistake. I thought, I'm still Iraqi. I went back there, I realized that I'm not an Iraqi no more. I cannot talk the way they talk. I'm more free, I'm more speak of my mind. I lost a lot of money. But I come back with two beautiful boys, and I add two more to my wife, between me and my wife, I mean, and that's where 4B come from, four brothers, because I'm not going to live too much longer. And I've been, he talking about, thanks to David, when he was talking about the project and two properties, and I love to see my kids saying, my dad, he did this. So built some memory to make it home. It is home to them, but I just want them to take, to stand strongly into this land, under this flag, to be an American and say, my dad, he built this, and I'm going to improve it, and I'm going to do more. And this is what I'm really all about. I am not like all of you guys, because I lost a country where six years lived in Saudi Arabia camp with no country, with no home country. Iraq was after me to kill me because I was fighting against Saddam Hussein. Saudi Arabia count me as a double because of difference of faith or whatever. But this is home, and I'm all about doing something that my kids can say, oh, my dad, he did this. And about the project, let's go back to business side of it. I'm sorry, I've been taking so much out of your time, but on the bakery side, I would love to have a pita bread bakery. It's good, it's healthy, people like it. We don't have it local, as far as I know, because I used to share a small business with a friend, and we always bring it all the way from Detroit, Michigan, frozen, and it's sold as a frozen pita bread in town. So I'm trying to make something local at Baklava, and a lot of Middle Eastern sweets and stuff, not fried, more healthy. I bring from that culture where people are poor, they cannot afford to buy the meat or to buy the oil, so they do everything natural, and they come up with some good stuff. And I brought some menu from Amin's Kitchen, and when I bought the business, it was in a very bad shape, and I have to pull the permit to work for the Health Department. It was even on the news when it was like invested with a lot of mice issue and this and that, but this is the third or the fourth inspection, none of that being happening anymore. The place is, looks very clean, very good and everything, and I think I'm doing a lot of improvement, and that's what I like to do. That's my happiness. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
I'd like one of those menus, please.
I brought money so you guys can see.
What time do you close today?
We close at 8:00.
Dane can help you.
I'm hungry.
You're right about the fresh pita bread. I usually end up buying something frozen and letting it thaw out, and it's not the same. I'm looking forward.
Yes.
Are there others in the chamber that would like to testify on this agenda item? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. Short recess for a couple. Teresa, I think we're finished with the public hearing on that portion, so.
We'll go on to 6B, amending Chapter 12.08 of the Lincoln Book Code relating to parks for various code amendments.
I'm sorry, yes. Thank you, Councilwoman. Sir, the last gentleman testified.
Hussein Kibla.
Would you come back for a moment, please? Councilwoman Gaylor Baird reminded me that we normally have everybody read their full name and address into the record, and we got excited, and I did. Would you just say it out loud into the microphone?
Hussein Kibla.
And your address?
2958 Dudley Street, Lincoln.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman, thank you very much for helping me. You kept my back today. And that's what we needed. Now we'll move to the next agenda item. Ms. Flecktoos, please.
Good afternoon. Nicole Flecktoos with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. Um, we're going to move to the next agenda item. Ms. Flecktoos, please.
Good afternoon. Nicole Flecktoos with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. Um, we're going to move to the next agenda item. Ms. Flecktoos, please. Good afternoon. Nicole Flecktoos with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. Um, we're going to move to the next agenda item. Ms. Flecktoos, please. Good afternoon. Nicole Flecktoos with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. Um, we're going to move to the next agenda item. Ms. Flecktoos, please. Good afternoon. Nicole Flecktoos with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. Um, we're going to move to the next agenda item. Ms. Flecktoos, please. Good afternoon. Nicole Flecktoos with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. Um, we're going to move to the next agenda item. Ms. Flecktoos, please. Good afternoon. Nicole Flecktoos with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. Um, we're going to move to the next agenda item.
name and address into the record, and we got excited, and I didn't. Would you just say it out loud into the microphone?
Hussein Kebla.
And your address?
Twenty-nine fifty-eight Dudley Street, Lincoln.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman, thank you very much for helping me. You kept my back today. And that's what we needed. Now we'll move to the next agenda item. Ms. Flecktes, please.
Good afternoon. Nicole Flecktes with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. What you have before you today is a change to section twelve point oh eight of the Lincoln Municipal Code. This is the section that allows for alcohol in parks and parks facilities in certain situations. And I just thought I'd give you a little bit of background, just to remind you what's already encompassed in the code and what is proposed for change today. So today, the city allows alcohol in three areas of the code, and those are not changing today, but those include the golf course clubhouses and the outdoor areas of the eighteen-hole courses, the premises of about nine parks and park facilities when those areas are not open otherwise to the public, and in conjunction specifically with a fundraising event for the Parks and Recreation Department or by a nonprofit for any city department. The third area is for Pinewood Bowl, which I know you're very familiar with, with events that are sponsored by Lincoln Parks and Recreation and programmed by S M G with a written agreement. And then there are two areas today that are proposed for change. One of those, today, currently, the code has provisions for both the Lincoln Children's Zoo and the Lincoln Children's Museum for alcohol to be allowed in conjunction with fundraising when those facilities are not otherwise open to the public. And the first change that's proposed is for the Lincoln Children's Zoo to be able to expand the event types for which alcohol may be served with S D Ls, wouldn't change or increase the number, but rather than be limited to fundraising events only, the zoo would like to be able to accommodate requests that they've had for other private events for alcohol, for things like weddings, for corporate events, and other private events. Our understanding is that renting zoo facilities for these kinds of events where alcohol is allowed is quite consistent with many other zoos across the country and is typically an important source of revenue for those facilities. So when I finish, Tom Houston and representatives from the Lincoln Children's Zoo are also here to discuss it more and to answer any questions that you would have. This change does not make an amendment to the provision for the Lincoln Children's Museum, just for the Lincoln Children's Zoo. The second revision before you would amend the section of code that already allows the hub as a condominium owner in the active living center with a written agreement to have alcohol in the center only, and it would expand that to the adjacent park area. And I'll show you a map here in a second that would show that area as well.
Three, two, one, go. Go. There we are.
Okay, very good. Brightness? Okay. Can you see that okay? The Active Living Center is the building that's adjacent to Union Plaza, and it's basically east of Twenty-first Street between P and Q and west of the Antelope Creek Channel. And that houses the Community Health Endowment Center, the Hub Cafe, and the James Snyder Trail Center. Doug Ditman, the owner of the hub and operator of the hub, is interested in offering some free community music events with local food, with local craft beer, and this is very much in line with our vision for this area to activate the space within Union Plaza and have some of these community events. They're proposed for Thursday evenings in August and September for six of those evenings. And again, today presently, under the code, with an agreement with the city, and as a licensed caterer, the hub would be able to serve within the James Snyder Trail Center, and this would just simply be expanding that area to the adjacent portions of Union Plaza for these outdoor events. So it would be the area that's shown here in the orange outline. It would be bounded on the east by the Antelope Creek Channel, on the south by P Street, on the north by Q, and on the west by Twenty-first Street, and then the Active Living Center itself. And that would be... That area would be addressed as part of an S D L and meeting all the requirements for having alcohol in those areas as part of getting those S D Ls. So the code amendment is needed for those events, and we think there's some public benefit to activating those spaces. We also have Susan Larson-Rodenberg and Doug Ditman, the owner and operator of the Hub Cafe here today. If you have any questions, these changes have been reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and by the Internal Liquor Committee as well and recommended for your approval. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if you'd like to ask some others to step up first, that would be fine, too.
We'll start with you. Council, do you have questions for this testifier?
Okay.
Ms. Flecktes, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there others that would like to speak? Mr. Houston?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is... I have to look. One hundred North Fifty-sixth Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. With me today is John Chapo, who's the President and CEO of the Lincoln Children's Zoo, Maya Harris, who's the Board Chair, and also Evan Colleen, who's the Chief Operating Officer. You may recall, back in December of two thousand sixteen, we undertook a new chapter for the Lincoln Children's Zoo with the passage of a construction and ground lease. Prior to two thousand sixteen, the zoo has really operated as a, more or less, an instrumentality of the city, because it really operated pursuant to the Lincoln Municipal Code. We repealed that code section and adopted a new construction and ground lease, and in conjunction with a very successful capital campaign, the expansion of the zoo is underway right now with a new entryway, new exhibition space, a new science-focused building, and some additional new reception area that can provide seating for events for a hundred and sixty or more people. The code section that we're trying to amend here is... I view it as a very minor amendment, primarily because the only restriction that currently is in the code is that it permits the zoo to have functions serving alcohol in conjunction with fundraising activities. We're seeking to remove that fundraising limitation, but, and it's really designed to accommodate the requests, multiple requests that the zoo has for other types of activities. You may be familiar with the Brew at the Zoo event or the Garden Party, and they're very successful fundraising events for the zoo, but there are a lot of requests that are turned down and denied, whether they're corporate events or other community activities or wedding receptions, that to date have not been permitted under the code, and we would like to be able to supplement, really, the income generated by the new facility with the opportunity that would be present with this change. Now, the one thing that I did want to emphasize that, because the... One of the primary restrictions that the zoo is really subject to is that the zoo always operates its events so that it does require a licensed caterer, and the caterer must have the ability to get an S D L, special designated license, and the zoo always does contract with outside security for these events. But all of those restrictions are subject to the S D L restrictions from the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. And what I put on the overhead here is really the restriction, the policy of the Liquor Control Commission, is that one particular site cannot get more than twelve S D Ls in a calendar year, and the zoo is not seeking to expand that. We're just seeking the opportunity to have some additional events at the zoo, taking advantage of the new facilities, to expand the really fundraising and financial aspects of these facilities to make some more return on the investment. I guess the other thing I would add is that construction is well underway. You may have read the recent article about the expansion of the expansion, so that the reception of the city has been very... And the community's been very strong for the capital campaign, and we're going to have a world-class children's zoo as a result of it. So I view this as a minor amendment. It allows the zoo to leverage their facilities a little bit stronger fashion, generate more revenue, to really supplement and help the zoo provide all the additional opportunities it does for the residents of the city of Lincoln. The other thing that I would say is that this is the last winter break the zoo gets to experience. It's going to a year-round zoo, and the facility will help that. So we get one last strong winter, and then we can move along. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilman Christiansen?
I just have a comment. We already have a world-class children's zoo. We're just going to make it better.
I agree with that.
Other questions from the council for this testifier, for Mr. Houston?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Would others in the chamber like to speak?
Galaxy class.
Anyone else? Ms. Flecktes, would you like a rebuttal? All right. So...
All right, that concludes our public hearing.
That actually ends our public hearing, too. Yay.
Yep. We can move into our voting session. Ordinance's third reading. Item seven A is the master lease purchase agreement and lease schedule number one with By Capital Inc. and a related escrow agreement for golf maintenance equipment in the amount of six hundred seventy-nine thousand eight hundred five dollars, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Gaylor Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold, discussion? Please call the roll.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Seven B is approving an agreement for tower space between the city and Verizon for placement of antennas on an existing city-owned cell tower at Main Street and Southwest Forty-second in Hallam, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Gaylor Baird, second by Councilwoman Raybold, discussion? Please call the roll.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Seven B is approving an agreement for tower space between the city and Verizon for placement of antennas on an existing city-owned cell tower at Main Street and Southwest Forty-second in Hallam, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Gaylor Baird, second by Eskridge, discussion? We own a tower in Hallam.
An axing Hallam.
I'm going to stick with my tower.
Next week.
I'm going to stick with my tower. Would you call the roll, please?
Christiansen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Our resolutions on first reading are items eight A through H. Ordinance's first reading are items nine A and B.